I'll order the Public Works Committee meeting of July 10, 2008. Will the Minutetaker please reflect the same members present as the Planning, Zoning, and Building Committee? I make a motion to approve minutes dated June 26, 2008. Is there a second?
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is report and recommendation for the contract award for 2008 Street Improvement Program. We did receive five bids, and with the lowest being $1,091,871.93 by Arrow Road Construction, and they are a reputable company. So I make a motion to recommend that a contract be awarded to Arrow Road Construction Company in amount of $1,091,871.93. Is there a second?
Second.
Anything on the question? Alderman Coles?
I would like to, I'd like, if you can, Dave, get me a list of the streets that are going to be done. I know you gave them to me, but I couldn't find them. If you got a chance, you can drop, drop some in my O box.
I actually have one right here.
Well, oh, you brought one, would you? Thank you. I'd appreciate it.
Look at that, that's great.
Thank you very much.
Right on the spot.
I appreciate it.
Okay, anything else on the, on the, on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item, item number five, is the 2007 Street Improvements, payment number five, final. And one question for you, Mr. Graff, on this. I saw that the payment will be $26,092.29. So is there anything else that we're leaving out? Any retainage money, or is this all monies, even retainage owed?
This is everything in retainage being returned. We had to reduce the retainage, I think, to 2% earlier in the year. They were just waiting for the weather to clear to do some things.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to go ahead and make the motion look for a second, and then if anyone has any issues or concerns, then I'll call the question at that point. I, I make a motion, we recommend that payment be made to Brothers Asphalt Paving Incorporated in amount of $26,092.29. Is there a second?
Second.
On the question, Alderman Police?
Dave, was this the one with the sidewalk problems and the punch list? And, because it says with only one potential punch list item remaining. What is that?
I think the project you're referring to is the sidewalk program from last year. And that's, that's the next item, and we can talk about that. And there's no items remaining on the, on the roadway resurfacing from last year.
Alderman Wesley?
This is the one that we had problems with, with the asphalt from the beginning. Am I right? And Joe Ward?
No, that was the 2006 program.
I don't know what project this is.
This was the resurfacing from last year.
Oh, okay.
Anything further on the question, Alderman Coles?
This was on Windsor Street and a few of the streets, just a resurface job.
Correct. It was resurfacing only Windsor was one of the streets. We put the speed humps on.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
Anything else on the question? Okay, there's a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item, item number six, is the 2007 Sidewalk Program, payment number four, partial payment. And question for you on this as well, Mr. Graff, that it shows that the payment is going to be 14,349. So, so then, is the 4,783.30 the last remaining dollars that, that we will owe them? So, so that's the actual retainage amount, which would equal the 2.5%?
That's, that's the retainage amount. That's the only thing remaining at this point. As we mentioned before, there's one potential punch list item, which was a sump pump line that may or may not have been damaged by them. We do pay them for repairing those damaged sump pump lines, so, so that could be some extra for that. It would still be within the contract amount. So the repair of that sump pump line could be the only additional thing. We don't know who caused it at this point, and we're still, they're supposed to dig it up in the next couple of days, and then we'll see. If it, if it, if they did damage it, then they will repair it again. They do get paid for that. So in addition to that retainage, there, there could be more money for that sump pump line repair. I would not expect more than $1,000 or $2,000 for that, but that's the ballpark of what it might be.
In addition to the 4,700? Or within the 4,700, the most it could be is 1,000 or 12,000?
That would be in addition to the 4,700. It would not be an extra to the contract. It's still within the contract amount, but it would be in addition to the 4,783. That's the retainage. That's what we're holding back for them for work they've already done.
Well, can we hold back more than, instead of a...
Yeah, we can. I just felt at this point that the, the potential work remaining would, would not be very much. 4,700 is enough incentive to keep them moving forward on it, so I didn't feel like we needed more than that. They're, you know, trying to pay their subs, and they don't pay their subs until they get paid by us, so, you know, naturally, they're interested in getting that lower as much as possible.
I'm going to call on Alderman at this point. Alderman Wesley?
On the sidewalk issue, isn't, aren't the sidewalks guaranteed for one year after they install?
Correct, they are guaranteed for one year.
So why would we, my concern is if we, knowing that they pour those in November, and December, or October, which was one of the coldest times, pour concrete, I would think that that is not enough retainer being held until we... And my question is, when that year is up, do we go out there and do a final walk on these sidewalks to make sure they didn't crack? Or do we just say, oop, year's up, and we just give them a check?
Well, we're not, we typically do not retain money for that one-year period. The contracts are not normally written that way. If something were to appear, a cracked sidewalk, or whatever, we would just tell them to fix that. If they refuse to fix that, I mean, obviously, that would jeopardize their getting future work in town, which is normally an incentive to get people out there to do it. But, but to answer your question, I, no, we wouldn't normally hold the retainage to the one-year mark.
Any other questions, comments? Alderman Police?
These guys place a bond. I mean, is that bond like a letter of credit for a year or something, for the warranty stuff?
No, there's no bond posted for that.
So once we give them this money...
It's a contract bond posted.
Once we give them this $14,000 back, oh, we owe them this 4,700, and they still have to do that pump that's been...
When that, when that final item gets resolved, then we would finally...
Yeah, that item's been going on two months? Okay, I know where I'm going.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to recommend that payment be made to A&amp;R Cement Incorporated in amount of $14,349.92. Is there a second?
Second.
Anything else on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
I'm going to ask the Minutetaker to, to call a roll.
Alderman Wesley?
No.
Alderman Police?
No.
Alderman Lewitan?
No.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Caddella?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
No.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Knite?
Yes.
Then, do I understand correct, Mr. Mayor, that this will go to council with no recommendation?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Next item, items to be considered at future meetings. A, storm sewers detention ordinance revision. Item B, grade separation, other safety alternatives endorsement. Item C, Emerald Ash Borer Action Plan. Item D, water consumption. Item E, Parkway Tree Ordinance. Are there any other items to be added? Alderman Police?
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Dave, if these guys get that pump fixed by next week's council meeting, let us know.
Okay, they're supposed to work on it in the next couple of days, so we'll do that.
Alderman Wesley?
Could I have, um, could I have a date when the Amber Ash Action Plan will be presented, please?
In August, we can get that to you.
Any other items? I make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I call the, I call to order the committee, the Community and Economic Development Committee. One of the... Okay, I'm sorry. Roll call. Eileen, can we have a roll call of those present?
Excuse me.
Alderman Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Police?
Here.
Alderman Lewitan?
Here.
Alderman Shaki?
Here.
Alderman Caddella?
Here.
Alderman Winger?
Here.
Alderman Coles?
Here.
Alderman Knite?
Here.
All being present, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the minutes of June 26, 2008.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I declare the minutes approved. Item number four, report and recommendation, master developer selection. We are down to two finalists that have been chosen by a committee. That committee has allowed those two finalists to make presentations to us at committee meetings over the last two committee sessions. Everyone is familiar with them now. They're the Lakota and the Daniels Group. And tonight, we're going to make a recommendation, or vote on a recommendation, to approve, to recommend one to the council. I scanned the internet...
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Alderman Lewitan, before we get too far into the conversation, I wish to recuse myself from the discussion and the decision on the matter. So I just wanted to state that.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you.
It's become a habit among the Aldermen, including myself, to go through the internet and see what can be found on the subject. In going through the internet and putting under Lakota and council presentations, I came across an internet site from the village, the Village of Northfield, from their meeting of May 20, 2008, in which they, they had a final presentation on road development on Willow Road. That was a Lakota Group study plan, which they paid approximately $92,000. And that program took several years. They had over 40 meetings with the public, with IDOT, and with political people involved in the processing, state senators, et cetera. I found it very interesting, because it would make a good case study, regardless of who we choose, and how we would deal with IDOT and with the master planners, because it's almost identical. Their problem was, for the last 50 years, the, the village, the Village of Northfield has had a running dispute with IDOT over Willow Road, because Willow Road is an excellent route between two major expressways, Edens and 294. And frankly, I was told by the village manager that IDOT's primary concern is helping motorists speed through the city to go from one expressway to another expressway. Willow Road goes through urban area where there are such amenities as shopping centers, schools, and areas where people would cross the street as pedestrians. It was hoped that they could come to some compromise, work up an agreement. After several years, many meetings, the Lakota Group was not able to create a plan that would even vote on how many lanes should be chosen. I spoke to Stacy Sigma, who is this village manager. Her comment, her final comments were that Lakota was an excellent engineering company. Their work was outstanding. They were very happy with the work, but they were unable to come to a final plan that could be accepted by IDOT. And that's why I picked this out as a good case study, because we're trying to work with IDOT. If it weren't for IDOT, we wouldn't be looking for a master planner. I'd like to ask all of you, regardless of who we choose, if we could ask the assistant city manager, if he would contact the city manager over there and learn more about their, their objective, and I would call it probably why they didn't succeed with IDOT, so we can learn some of the pitfalls to watch for as we work with our master planner. Alderman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This may sound harsh, and I don't mean it to, but you can find a lot of things on the internet. And if you're looking to support a direction you're trying to go in, or your own theory, there's always things you can find. You didn't, you didn't bring to the table the, the numerous, the, the vast amount of information about S.B. Friedman, who is a key player for the same group, and who would be of paramount importance for the critical success of this project. Yeah, I just, so I just want to make sure that I think, you know, your, your intention might be that, something to look out for, but I just want to take the, the opposite side of the table here and, and say, I've only had a few minutes to, to review this information that you found, but, you know, the situation doesn't sound, doesn't sound similar. We are not in the middle of a 50-year dispute with IDOT. In fact, right now, IDOT is, has several options, alternatives on the table for this project that are all, at this point, very favorable, favorable for Wooddale. I, I don't see that we're going to have an IDOT issue. And one last thing, once again, without having had time to, to study this on my own yet, I suspect that there's a possibility that the council, or the trustees, or whatever they are in this particular village, might have had a vision that was completely counterintuitive with what IDOT needed to achieve. In our case, I think that our vision falls right in line with what IDOT needs to achieve. They have to move vehicles, and they have to move them as fast as they can, and with limited disruption. But I think we can easily accomplish what we're trying to do, and have IDOT accomplish what they're trying to do, without the need for any, any political assistance or intervention. I think, I, I don't think that we're going to be at a point where we're going to come to heads with them. I think, I think we're going to easily be able to work together on this, because the two plans seem to already be, be married, just in form and function. So, once again, I apologize if it seems like I came on you. I just, I, I needed a, you know, kind of retort and make sure that the rest of council at least understands how, how one of the people up here is thinking. You know, I don't, I don't think this is similar. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Caddella. And I will reemphasize that I said that her opinion of their engineering was excellent, which would be a point in your decision. I'm saying, though, that IDOT is IDOT, and I think that it would never hurt us to learn as much as we can from other people who have had an experience in such a recent time. After all, this came to an inclusion in May of 2008. So the people who are most likely to know the animal that we're dealing with is the people who have most recently been in the cage with the animal. And I think that on a, on a level of, of city manager to assistant city manager, it would be a good way to learn what we can learn, and as I said, this would be irregardless of who we chose. I still think learning from our peers is a valuable source of knowledge. Alderman Police?
In this memo that you were reading, in her opinion, the reason that they could not gain a consensus with the people, the politicians, and IDOT, see that, right there, they couldn't gain consensus between the politicians and the people and IDOT. I think we already have a consensus that we want to Wooddale and Thorndale Road interchange, as well as 83, which is in a lot of those plans. Basically, these guys are going to develop a plan. It's up to our staff to deal with IDOT. Not, these guys may be at the table, but staff is the one that's going to be fighting for our, for our interests.
That's a good point. Staff will be fighting for our interests. So once again, it makes a good idea for staff to, to talk to the gladiators who are just in the arena. Alderman Knite?
Yeah, then are you suggesting that staff contact all their successful projects that they've done, many of them listed here, to see, you know, give them the benefit of the doubt, and then we, you get to weigh, they had one bad one, and they maybe had 20 successful. I don't believe, you know, 70% of the internet is not verifiable. So when you come up with information, all the internet says right off. I'm skeptical about that. This is a unique situation to Wooddale. This has nothing to do with wherever it was, Northlake or whatever. You know, we have our own situations in town. We deal with them on a one-to-one basis. This is what we got to do. I don't think we should reference something that they did in another community, and I think it should be judged on its own merit, and should be judged on their own presentation. I don't think we should be weighing this against, you know, one unsuccessful project that they... And who knows the particulars? You know, it, there's so many variables that we don't know. I'm basing my decision on their presentation, on the presentation of the two companies before us, not on, you know, and to, to put a lot of emphasis on what somebody says, or you're reading here on the internet, stuff like that. I don't buy it at all, and I don't think it's a good idea.
Well, I agree with you when you say that you should check for those events where they were successful. Absolutely, you're absolutely correct. Look at both sides of the coin. But I'd only look at those that involved IDOT, because that's the only situations that would be similar. Alderman Coles?
I got one thing to say about that letter. You're a businessman. You can't satisfy everybody that you deal with, and this is the same thing with them. This person that you talked to, and whoever was, it could be have people that were protesting about widening the street, you could have had all kinds of protests, and you can't go by that. You've got to go by what you see and read, and don't depend on other, what other people say. If you do that, you'll never pick anybody. We got to get somebody that's willing to do the work, and that's what I, I'm banking on.
Alderman Shaki? Shaki?
I did hear something about the other group, and in checking into it, I found out it was false. So it's, it's really tough to put that kind of thing in it, but I'd like to say, you know, we've done, we've had studies done by consultants. I wish I can count them all. I don't know whose fault it is, if it's our fault, or if it's the consultant's fault, but I think most of them are sitting on our shelf. We haven't done anything with them. We spent a lot of money, but done nothing with them. Now, I feel we are making the most important and biggest, and probably the most expensive decision we can make in hiring a consultant. We have two firms that are, I believe, excellent. I don't think either one of them is perfect. I don't think either one of them is real bad. They are both good firms. We need consultants now, because as, as John Caddell and I have found out, working with the zoning board and some staff, zoning consultant in some of the staff, I think sometimes the consultants may be in la-la land. They don't understand what we're looking for, and it's partially our problem, because we didn't let them know exactly what we wanted. So we, we can make changes there. But now we have things concerning the Western Access of O'Hara Field, which supposedly will be done before the, in quotes, Olympics in Chicago. We're talking about a town with now 14,000 residents approximately, and my vision for Wooddale is to still have a small town a number of years from now, not to really change the residential part of our town. That's what we're working for in the zoning thing, I believe, so that we don't make it into a, a place of just mansion, so that people can afford to live here as they have in the past. I see a different economy right now, where the homeowners are having difficulty living here. And we need economic development, so we can keep the homeowners' taxes and costs in line. We want the people who are here to be able to stay here, and we want people, their kids, their children, to be able to move into Wooddale. Now, we, as I say, we have two groups of firms. Both gave great presentations. You know, I, I wish the world was all black and white. I wish one was bad and one was good, so it would be easy to make the, the decision. And I've been working with it for a couple of weeks now, and it's been difficult. But again, we're talking about the future of Wooddale. I wish we had a scorecard to judge these, these companies. You know, if we could know how many projects they started, and how many they finished, and how many actually came into fruition, how many were put on the shelf, like so many of ours were in the, in the past, that would help make a decision, but we can't do that. There isn't any black and white. All we can try and do is make the best decision we can, and hope for the best percentage of success. And we're going to have a new city manager who has a lot of experience in economic development, who, whichever firm we pick, will be able to stay on their butt, and make sure that they're following up and doing things that we want them to. So after an awful lot of thought, an awful lot of thought, back and forth, I would like to make a motion that we accept the Wright White Group with Lee Daniels as our master planner to work with and find out about schedules and cost. I wish we could do that now, but the mayor tells me we can't until we make that decision. Be nice to know what we're going to be paying for it ahead of time. But I'd like to make a motion that we go with the White Group as our master planner. And I hope somebody would make a second on that motion.
Okay, I'll make the second, I'll second it.
On the question, please.
Alderman Caddella?
I agree with Alderman Shaki. Both groups made excellent presentations. And I'm also going to agree with Alderman Shaki that I think we've got a lot of studies sitting on the shelves. So to that extent, to that end, the implementation is the largest part of this study, 75% or more, in my opinion. And we're fooling ourselves to walk away from a group with the implementer, S.B. Friedman. And if you know anything about Chicago real estate and, and development, and if you take the time to, to look into it, you're going to see this name is everywhere on a lot of successful projects. This is, in, in a world where it's not black and white, and in a situation where we had two groups give excellent presentations, this was the decis-
this was the deciding factor for me. This, this is who I know is going to be able to help us assemble, redevelop, rezone, and make sense out of, out of the land surrounding and encompassed, you know, in this, in this area. So I just, just got to go on record and reiterate to everybody that plans are great. I think we're fooling ourselves to think that these plans are not going to be highly representative of this group of people. We, you know, I don't know that I want to call it ego, but we've got some very strong visions, some, some strong passion. We know, we feel we're confident what we know we want this to be. We're going to rely on the consultant to tell us if we're right or not. But I think ultimately, at the end of the day, whoever the designer, the master planner, even the engineer, is going to take a lot of input from us. And these plans, these designs are going to be reflective of nine people sitting up here. It's the implementation that's critical. And that's why my vote has to strongly go for the Lakota group. Thank you.
Eileen, would you take the vote on the motion that's on the floor?
Alderman Wesley? Alderman Police?
No.
Alderman Lewitan?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki? Alderman Caddella?
No.
Alderman Coles?
No.
Alderman Canipe?
No.
Okay, the motion failed. Alderman Police?
I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to negotiate with the Lakota group.
Second.
Alderman Shaki?
I'd like to make a motion that we vote as a majority in this vote. I'd like to make it clear that if we're going to be hiring somebody, that we should be, and everybody should vote the same way, that we should be in agreement. If you can add that to the motion.
Alderman Police?
As the, as the motioner, I don't want that part of my motion. And normally, when we vote up here, majority rules. Since when do we, if it's four to three, or five to two, it's the majority rules, period.